Okay, so we have the item on here at the first reading. I would ask for a motion. Mr. Webb? Is there a second? Ms. Campbell?
Second.
A motion and a second. So at this point, I would open up for discussion for council. Ms. Roddick?
I'll start. Just to hit on some of those slides, Brian, there was one in particular where I think it went one, two, three, four items that were checked off and one you said not did meet that one. The new retail space was the one that was not checked off. I'm gonna walk that from bottom to top. New retail space, not there, correct. Civic uses, yes, there are civic uses in this design. However, it's nothing new, it's just relocated. Traffic connectivity, running that street through, that does connect traffic from Fishburg to Chambersburg and some other connections, true. Walkable. Now, if by walkable you mean by the pure definition of I can go there and walk, sure. But by that definition, Troy is walkable. And so is Brant Pike. It's walkable, I have sidewalks, I can walk down it. But that's not what was meant by walkability when we were talking about the study. I have no reason to go to this design and walk. What would I walk to? It'd be like every place else in Huber Heights. I pull in, I park, I go in, I do my business, I go back to my car, drive to the next place. I got no reason to walk to another place there. Nothing there to walk to. And the outdoor space recreation, I did not get that either. Where would, say I'm a young family, my kids are not all gone, but I'm a young family and I want to take them out and we're gonna go down there to this new development for some little outdoor recreation. What am I gonna do? So I'm gonna say, we hit two out of five. But I don't think that's what people wanted. People didn't want two out of five. Money, we talk about money a lot. We talk about breaking even. You know what? The prior owner of that space, that was his only concern too. You see where that got us, right? In the Buxton stuff, you were talking about all the data and whatnot. And I love data. I do love data because depending on where I want to go, I can make the data work for me or not. But does Buxton or any of these other, any of these other companies, do they address outside of major retailers, major national brands? Do they, do they address niche markets or, or, you know, that type of thing? Locality by locality as to where they stand or even on a regional basis? Is that addressed within those studies or is it primarily national retailers?
Buxton or ESRI only responds with the information that they're given. So if the niche market or if the regional franchise or whomever that is hasn't provided that information to the database to be utilized, then no, it would not be reflected within that information. So it is all about whether or not there is that communication between those parties. But regardless of whether or not the niche market component is represented, the demographics wouldn't be misrepresenting or wouldn't be misleading with regard to the same market elements. If a Casanos, for instance, if the demographics of Casanos don't work, the demographics for Marion's isn't going to work either.
Sure. That's it. Thank you, ma'am. For my comments.
Any other discussion?
How many pages do you want me to go through? Some of them were for the developer who obviously isn't here, so I will skip those. Brian, what other companies or developers have you been working with in this area?
I can say that we've had conversations with several different developers. This is the one who responded with a proposal.
Okay. Several like tens, several like...
Half a dozen.
Okay. Okay. I know, Jeff, you said, we gotta act on this fiscally, not emotionally. I'm emotional, so I'm gonna act emotional. I went out yesterday and I walked the neighborhood behind there. I worked Danesbury, I walked Leable, I talked to the residents. They feel they're not heard on this council. They don't know what a single set of tree lines that's in that area, how that's a buffer for a three-story apartment building looking into their backyard. And when it's winter, there's really nothing bearing that. They, I've given Tony some petitions, some letters, there's been emails sent. The residents aren't happy. Wanting to know, you know, how should I put this? And I'm new to this and you can please correct me and I'm fine with that. Notices were sent out to Dial Park about a bike path put back through there. A bike path on a park already. This is a whole new development with people smack in their backyards and these people got no notification, no nothing. They feel so blindsided by this, it's not funny. These are permanent residents. These are people who have been there for multiple years. These are people who have raised their family and are currently raising their family there. We got to give them the same respect, even if their income is not what it is up here on Old Troy to this, they're still humans raising their families on that property. We have to treat them the same as we would somebody else, period. Also, should we really move ahead with this? We have so many projects going on right now. We have hopefully a new city manager coming on before long. Hopefully sooner than later, even though you're doing a great job, Brian, I'm not trying to down you by any stretch of the means. We don't have a development director currently here and here we're wanting to do this. I have an issue with that. We have the water system still going on, which that is right in the heart of water problems. How are we doing all this? We can't replace every water line right away. We have got something in the works, but that's not all of that area. So how is the whole water system going to be constructed there?
Hold on a second, because that is a very important point. Brian, would you like to address that?
So with regard to the, we'll call it the utility issue, the information that we've had presented with respect to the concentration of water main breaks, this particular area isn't receiving a disproportionate amount of breaks relative to the majority of the city. The area where we're seeing the disproportionate breaks, excuse me, to the northeast of Chambersburg and Old Troy, that area is already being designed for, there's five or six sections where we're seeing those abnormal number of breaks. Those areas are all currently under design to be replaced. Those replacements would happen later in 2022, even if the project that is under consideration by council, if it were even to pass tonight and be fast-tracked through all of the other processes that this particular project needs to go through, construction at this location wouldn't commence until late 2022 coinciding with the water main replacement occurring in the area where we're seeing the abnormal number of breaks. Because we're not seeing an abnormal number of breaks in this particular area designated for the project and because the infrastructure for this project would be going in around the same time as the problematic infrastructure is being replaced, we do not believe that this project would be detrimental to the system moving forward when it is fully operational. Even if the infrastructure went in in September, October, or November, that is still the first infrastructure that needs to go in. The apartments themselves would then be built after that. So the actual use and demand on the system would not occur for several months after that, meaning that the problem areas where we're seeing the abnormal number of breaks, all of that replacement work should be done, if not nearly complete, when this project were to come online and actually begin drawing water from the utility or adding to the wastewater distribution system.
I would still feel more comfortable once we get the study done and know what's causing the breaks and everything else because it could potentially be a problem there. We don't know that yet because we don't know what the problem is. Just saying. Okay. Also, numbers don't total up with me. We're selling seventeen acres, eight point one was the multi-generational apartments, six was senior, what's the other land for? That doesn't equal seventeen, that's in our packet.
I'm sorry, with respect to...
Somewhere it said that we were selling seventeen acres, but when it has the specs, it was eight point one acres was the multi-generational and the senior was six point oh, which does not equal seventeen.
You're referring to the concept drawing?
Yes.
So the concept drawing predated the actual verbiage within the agreement? And again, it's conceptual and subject to final survey as well as the process for site approval, which correlates to your comments earlier regarding the notification of the adjoining neighbors. We're providing the process, we are following the process that is provided to us through the code or through practices approved by council. In the instance of Dial Park, there was no specific process for staff to follow. That was a direction provided by council to notify those particular individuals with respect to that project after debate first occurred at this body, if I recall that correctly. With regard to those neighbors being noticed of this project, approving this development agreement doesn't guarantee that the development occurs. It sets basic terms and conditions for the agreement, or excuse me, for the development to occur in its partnership with the city. But the development itself still has to go through the formal process before the planning commission. And based on that process, that is when those residents who would be, who would meet those minimum requirements of notification, would receive those notifications so that they could come to the planning commission and they could eventually come to council and provide their commentary on how the project would impact them. So we are not, by any stretch of the means, by any stretch of means or imagination, being disrespectful or ignorant to the needs and the wants of our citizens, we as staff are following the administrative processes and procedures that are laid out for us by legislation enacted by council. So I want to be clear about the fact, we are not trying to sneak this in under the radar or we're trying to put it past people without their knowledge or not giving them an opportunity to have their voice heard. These projects are incredibly complicated, they take a great deal of time and they require that a process be followed. And we are simply at a point in the process where those residents are not yet notified, but we are not through the process. And as we move through that process, those residents who have the potential to be impacted will be provided the appropriate notice in response to the code and the procedures that we have so that their voice can be heard by the planning commission and by city council.
Also, can I ask why, when we first got this on Friday, it read that we were trying to approve for senior housing and the market rate housing? And now when we get it, suddenly the market rate's not on there, but the senior is. Why did that get eliminated off?
I think she's talking about the title of the legislation.
I'm gonna blame, I'm gonna blame Jerry. No, quite honestly, ma'am, I don't know why that was left off the title of the legislation. I know that we were, we were asked to make sure that it was on the agenda for this evening and so we were trying to make sure that we assembled all the appropriate legislation and materials within the timeline. That could just be an oversight. Do we get the...
Yeah, I drafted the legislation, I just didn't...
So it's Jerry's fault, I just want to make that clear.
My fault. Yeah, because it was on Friday and then today it wasn't and I'm like, why did this suddenly get done differently? As I said, I had down here, you know, should this kind of not be passed until we have a city manager and a developer? Also, have we, since we don't have that economic developer, has there been conversations with the community planner insights that we're contracting with right now? Has those talks been happening or...
Again, that would all be part of that process. Once this is approved in the due diligence phase, this is typically reflective of what would happen on the private side of the table. If we were not the government, if we were just the landowner, we would come to terms and conditions of sale with the developer, whoever that might be, whether or not they're gonna build apartments or whether or not they're gonna make a factory. And we would reach our terms and conditions and one of those, several of those terms and conditions are going to be things like, as the app, as the future owner, I need to ensure that the property will be rezoned for the use I want, that once it's rezoned for the use I want, will they approve the specific site plan that I need for my business or for my end use to occur? And once those things happen, normally in the private sector, those are the final conditions of sale and then the properties close. A prime example of this where we are ancillary involved is with the Westport Villages project on, on the north side of Chambersburg for whatever, two hundred and eighty-some single-family homes. So they had several conditions in place that were required and one of the things that they put in place prior to them being able to close was to ensure that they had approval for site plan, layout, and rezoning. So all of those things have occurred and now they are continuing their due diligence with the actual landowner. In this particular instance, it's not a dissimilar process, it's more openly available to the public to see and there are more items that we as the government have to check off because we are the government and not a private organization or private business. But what we're going through now is not dissimilar in that everyone is making sure, both parties are making sure that their needs and wants are being looked after with regard to this transaction going forward.
Okay. Another thing was, I was here in very verbal on August thirty-first at the town hall, as private citizen at that point. We were told that we would get a clean slate proposal because the citizens had expressed what they wanted. What the sketch was on the thirty-first was not what people wanted. Have we seen a clean slate proposal? Is there one? Because right now, here's how I'm looking at it. And as I said, I'm gonna have the emotional side because that's me, okay? I have the financial side, but I also have the emotional side. People wanted a downtown. I'm gonna tell you right now, that's not a downtown. Not even close. That has absolutely nothing that will bring me to it unless I'm sitting on council and we move council chambers here. Not one darn thing. I, sitting here with an eighty-some-year-old mother, I don't want to say her name because she will kill me, I was just watching, that's not walkable for her. There is a thousand and sixty parking spaces. If she wanted to get from one of the senior places to the library, it would be a health and safety risk going through, you guys have seen how people drive through the parking lots here in Huber. She would not be able to walk and she does not drive. She would not be able to walk that, how this is laid out. It's not a walkable area. Lastly, I'm just gonna give my little spill to you guys. Ward four should get the same respect as ward one did with Dial, ward six with the developmental Bell Fountain and ward five and the apartments that was going in there. These are hardworking families that have lived there in a nice peaceful neighborhood. The phrase "people for politics" has been used as a campaign slogan by a few. I ask, where's the people for politics in this plan? The study of citizens, not just ward four, wanted a downtown. I asked why, we were asked if the council had no desire to make this a downtown. Don't promise the citizens something that we can't possibly fill. I was told when I was elected to make a decision, I was elected to make a decision and that is correct. But more so than making a decision, I was elected to represent the vision wishes of the people in my ward and I will continue doing that for ward four. Because I went out for hours talking with residents yesterday and listening to their visions, my vote on this concession and going through tonight is a no.
So Anita, I'm gonna be blunt with you. You and I had a meeting for quite some time, we spent a lot of time together. And one of the things you had asked me to do a couple weeks ago on a Thursday was to have the city manager provide a letter of intent to the Cincinnati Reds to provide housing on this site for baseball players for the Dayton Dragons. So I gotta be honest, I'm a little bit confused here why in your mind, housing is okay for minor league baseball players on this site, but it's not okay for anybody else.
Just a small amount of housing.
I mean, so, I don't wanna argue this, but seriously, I mean, and I think that's a question you gotta answer. You wanted a letter of intent sent to somebody to your connection at the Cincinnati Reds to provide housing for minor league baseball players. We have a project that's gonna provide housing for senior citizens and for other residents and now suddenly you don't like housing? Don't understand that. We talk about a downtown, I have never been to any downtown area where there's not a lot of people and a place for a lot of people to live. The whole revitalization of downtown Dayton happened around one specific item, the Dayton Dragons baseball facility. There is now restaurants, bars, and if you haven't been down there, a lot of housing for people to live. People have migrated, they have moved down there because they want to be a part of that area. So I've never seen a downtown that didn't consist of lots of places for people to live. Now, I'm aware that there are a lot of people who don't believe that this is what their vision was. But if revitalization is gonna start on Brant Pike, it has to start with something. It has to start with something. Now, if the developer, like I'm asking, if the developer came in and said, you know what? Ms. Kitchen, that is a perfect idea. We will set aside two whole buildings and a hundred of these apartments to allow for baseball players who can't afford to, because I'm aware now that the major league changed the rules, so the major league organization has to provide housing for their minor league farm teams. And if they were gonna set aside all this property to allow for housing of these minor league baseball players, would you be a no?
Depends on how it was all set up.
Of course, of course. I think I'm making my point here and that is that in this particular case, you're in favor of some housing, but in another case, you're not in favor of housing. And I'm having a difficult time understanding why that's the case and I don't think you've clarified that other than just being a point. And, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna argue any further about that, but I just, I think it, I'm having a hard time having a resolution in my own brain about that, how housing is okay for baseball players, but it's not okay for senior citizens. I'm baffled by that. Yes, Glenn?
Just real quick, Anita, since Anita mentioned it, I also walked and spoke with a lot of the residents yesterday. And Tony, you have all the petition signatures that were gathered, any letters that were provided and all the emails that you received, part of this, this meeting packet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Yes, Speaker?
Just to clarify, Tony, how many emails did you receive? I think I got fifteen. Forty-three thousand residents. And how many on the petition?
I have accounted those, I was just given those right before the meeting, but you guys have an idea of how many were on the petitions?
Probably fifty, but that was, we went out in the cold. I mean, it was pretty brutal, we lasted for about three hours.
This has been going on since 2015. If we haven't heard from more than seventy-five people, I think it's probably a go.
Okay, I've been on council for a whole three weeks.
This has been in the works since 2015. The Brant Pike, the date up there was 2015.
So I think the point she's making, and I agree, we've been talking about this for seven years now.
We've tried to.
And, and, well, I haven't seen any other proposal by anybody else.
I've had to ask for open discussion just for what people want to see in it, just a general working meeting where we can just have general discussion to figure this out and that's been denied.
Any other discussion? Yes, Richard?
Guess it's my turn, right? Thank you. Before I go on to my prepared questions and notes, there was a few that came up here. Brian, Jerry, a lot of these are gonna be pointed to you guys. First, I'll start with Brian. Understanding that the public was just notified of this item Friday afternoon, is there a rush for council to pass this tonight?
That would be council's, that would be council's decision.
So let me ask you, let me rephrase that. In your conversations with the developer that has read the Brant Pike revitalization plan, have they told you of any type of rush or expedited process they need?
They would like to start this process as soon as possible so that they can transfer their build crew from the broad-reach Taylorsville, Old Troy project to this location once they are done constructing on the north side of town.
So if they want to start this process as soon as possible, my question would be, in the development agreement, what is the need of section 4.11? And to, while you pull that up here, if I read section 4.11 thoroughly, this section allows the developer to hold an option on the property until May twenty-fourth of 2023 and do nothing with an option to say, we're not going to do anything as of May twenty-third of 2023 and get a refund of their deposit. So if they're looking to start soon, I say we take that section out. If not, I say we pass this on to a second reading.
I can say that the agreement in and of itself provides protections for both parties and that to single out one particular provision does not, does not invalidate or does not, does not provide the whole context in which the agreement also protects and defends the interests of the city.
And I want to put a pin in that because I'm gonna come back to that one comment. So not to touch on that one section, let's go to another section, 4.12. This states that the developer can hold an option on the property until January twenty-third of 2023 and still get a $20,000 return on the deposit and not a single thing happened. Am I correct in those two reviews of those two sections, to your knowledge?
Provided that the city council were to approve the request for that option.
Well, that option is in the development agreement. So we would be approving that tonight because it states the effective date tied to the resolution.
My understanding of the agreement is that to request those extensions are not, those extensions are not automatic, those extensions have to be approved by the city council.
4.12 says there is no extension that is needed, that is the set time period. Section 4.11 allows two sixty-day extensions with providing deposits of $10,000 each, which then can still be returned to the developer. Not the two extension deposits, the initial $20,000 deposit, right?
We have to remember that this agreement is still in draft form. I mean, it's not the final agreement, it's, the request is to negotiate and finalize this agreement, substantially on these terms. But from my, and I apologize because I don't know it by sight, so my understanding is they have a certain amount of time to close, that's what the $20,000 deposit is for. If for some reason they're not ready to close, they can extend it for sixty days with the they can extend it for sixty days with the ten thousand dollar deposit, which is non-refundable. Meaning if they don't close, that's us. And each time they do that, it's a non-defundable deposit, non-refundable deposit, and I think it's, the last one is a twenty thousand dollar one.
So in section four point one-one, it states, and I'll read verbatim. It states, "In the event the closing date has not occurred or been scheduled or on before the date which is twelve months after the effective date." So it already establishes the timeline. So that means they have twelve months to close.
There are, okay, there are two, there are two timelines within the agreement. One is the condition to close.
And Brian, not to interrupt you, the reason I'm asking these questions is because these timelines and these dollar amounts was not in your presentation to the public.
There are two timelines. There are the ti- excuse me, there is the timeline to meet the conditions to close, and then there is the timeline for closing. And they are not one in the same. And so the penalties of, the financial penalties relate to conditions of close. The actual timeline to close is secondary to that. So, um, so the city's interest with respect to the finances of the property would be met, and the developer would have the approvals that they needed to, to move forward to close. So there is a, we'll call it a penalty to the developer based on the content of the, the total content of the agreement relative to meeting the conditions of close relative to close. And that's not dissimilar to our agreements that we've had with the library, that we've had with Horizon Line, or with other development.
And I agree with that, Brian, but you stated just moments ago, I asked if there was a rush, you said they want to start immediately. But if they wanna start immediately, we got two provisions in there that give them either a date, uh, to close um, of January of twenty twenty-three or a future date o- option of May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three.
Mr. Shaw, I believe my comments on the developer were that they wished to start as soon as possible. That didn't say that they need to start, or they demand to start. They would like to start as soon as possible. And their wish was to coordinate one building crew at one site and transitioning them to this site. However, I'm quite confident that if council chose to table this particular item tonight and visit it at another meeting, that would not invalidate their desire to come back and build two weeks later, or four weeks later, or six months later, if that were the timeframe it took for council to pass this particular legislation.
So that would, that would be my request, um, because, uh, the public has had, um, uh, just a, a few days to review this, as well as, uh, third parties who are interested in the site, as well as existing business owners. Um, and my, my additional would be, uh, to remove those two sections, um, because I don't see how it's a a penalty to the developer more than a penalty to the city if that developer is holding on that land for a year, a year and a half, and they're getting penalized twenty thousand dollars, but the city and its residents are getting penalized because we're not able to market that property.
Well, sir, then I guess that's why you have a vote, and I do not.
Yes, sir. So, um, additionally, I will state, um, or ask, my apologies. Um, the proposed development agreement that we were provided shows a date of twenty twenty-one. Uh, can I ask when staff started working on this development agreement? You mentioned conversations with them started two and a half years ago, but when did this development agreement start?
We exchanged proposal, I think the initial proposal came in maybe right before Thanksgiving.
So with that context, and let me go back here. When I'm looking on page twenty-six of Exhibit A twenty-five of the agreement, um, can you, uh, tell me who are the individuals or the names of the individuals who provided comments in the mark, margin CB one, DF two R one, and CBR, I'm sorry, CB three R one, that appear to be negotiation, uh, efforts on behalf of the city and the developer?
Sir, my, I am comments CB, and DF is Doug Fowler, who is one of the agents of the interested, uh, interested party of the developer.
Do we know who the third individual is?
The third, I'm sorry, the third individual would be, there should be no the blue comments in the, in the agreement are mine, and the red comments are Mr. Fellers.
Okay, 'cause we're identifying those as three different individuals. That's, that's why I was asking, uh, since that is a public document. Um, additionally, as noted in section five point two, it mentions a hundred and fifty temporary jobs uh, will be provided, uh, within this development agreement. Uh, and I know it's been, uh, stated several times that this is a concept, not a set in stone project. Uh, with that being said, are you able to disclose what the hundred and fifty temporary jobs are being, uh, provided?
I'm, I'm not.
I have a problem that council's asked to vote on a development agreement where there's a, a detailed item in there that we're not able to provide context to, to the residents, and that would go to additional section five point two and the five permanent jobs. And I think that would, that would provide more detail to the mayor's comments of the, uh, alleged thirteen million dollars that would go to the school, uh, that we provided and see no calculations on.
Well, in this particular instance, Mr. Shaw, those jobs would have to be validated by the developer with respect to this agreement, and the way that these agreements come together is in this particular instance, there is the CRA. And the CRA is tied to employment as well as investment dollars. So while the agreement might say a hundred and fifty jobs, and the developer can only produce documentation that they're seventy jobs, then the city's not under any obligation to award the CRA in the content or the context in which, uh, the agreement is structured because the developer didn't meet their particular obligation. As I've and perhaps maybe I didn't do the best job in articulating the fact that this is a long and complicated process, and there are multiple agreements involved that are the checks and balances along the way. This is somewhat of a marathon. I think if we were to provide an analogy, and it goes without saying that you don't run a marathon without training, and you don't complete a marathon with the first step you take when you cross the start line. This is the start of the marathon that will lead to the end win of a forty million dollar multifamily investment comprised of a hundred and ninety-two market rate units and a hundred and thirty-three senior units. This is a process that takes time. It is a partnership of trust, and there are multiple steps along the way, and this is just one of those steps. And so there are opportunities at the planning commission level, again before city council, at, uh, the state, or at, at the administrative level when it comes to validating incentive requirements, at the state level when it comes to validating, uh, incentive requirements. And those incentive requirement obligations continue for fifteen years. I am here to advance the interests of council in accordance with policy, procedure, and law. And the policy and procedure and law that will require me, that I'm required to follow to advance this project will ensure that the checks and balances exist and are in place to adequately address the concerns that you have with respect to the jobs and the benefits that this agreement allows us to negotiate and enter into on behalf of the city.
So with that stated, and I know it's been brought up multiple times, of forty million dollars, um, the site development market valuation, uh, plan that stated in the development agreement, um, do we have the, uh, um, due diligence of that analysis provided, uh, prior to?
We do not.
So, Brian, you have to understand from my position, I don't have the research available to enter into this agreement to give to my bosses, the residents, to say, hey, this is, yes, a plan, but I've got no research to go on it. I'm going on the hope and what-if of a thirty-year item where the residents stated very clearly of what they wanted in this particular area. So I'm gonna leave those options, or those items there, and, um, we're going to, to move on. Uh, in section one, Homestead fifty-five plus, and section two, Homestead Apartments, the combined number of the units are three hundred and twenty-five, with a total number of parking spaces of four hundred and fifty-four. Can I ask how that was initially calculated, and please, for the love of Mike, don't say it's a concept?
It is, and again, Mr. Shaw, this has to go before the planning commission for review and evaluation, where all of these issues will be ironed out in the basic development plan, returned to council for approval, and then sent back to the planning commission for detailed development plan approval. And at that point in time, whatever the planning commission and the city council determine to be the appropriate number of parking spaces will be the appropriate number of parking spaces.
So, let's, let, I guess let me move on and touch on the, uh, the CRA and the, uh, the TIF here as well. Um, I, I do have to say that I was a little interested, and Jerry, this may go to you, uh, under Article Three, representation, uh, representations and covenants of the parties in section G. Um, is that standard language that we use in our development agreements? And I'll give you a moment to review that.
Where, where are you in again?
Uh, Article Three, um, covenants of parties, section E and G, actually.
For, you're talking about section three point, three point one, I'm sorry? Three point two.
I believe it's three point two.
You said E and G?
Uh, E and G, yes.
Well, E, three point two. E is, there's no litigation pending or threatened? That's the one you're talking about?
Correct. Let's, let's
Yes, that is extremely standard language.
That is standard language.
Yes.
So Jerry, let me ask some further questions on that here. I actually have that pulled up here now on section E.
G is also standard with respect to Ohio Revised Code thirty-five seventeen thirteen. No members have any connection with, uh, the developer.
So i- if council was to pass this tonight, we would be stating that there is no litigation pending or threatened against or by wherein unfavorable rulings or deci- decisions would materially adversely affect its ability to carry out the obligations under this agreement. So you, as a law director, um, uh, until a vote takes place, are stating that we have no litigation pending or threatening on this matter. Is that correct?
No litigation that would adversely affect our ability to carry out this agreement.
Okay. And section G, um, it mentions, uh, political action committees and, uh, members of, uh, of both parties. You're stating that that is also, um, a part of standard language within the development agreements?
Well, this is not our representation. It's their representation.
Okay. Can you ex-
They're, they're representing that they have no members.
They have no mi-
That, they, they are saying that each of their members, to the best of their knowledge and their spouts, and any political committee that they're affiliated with is not, uh, was not running to a violation of Ohio Revised Code thirty-five seventeen thirteen.
Affiliated in what manner? That the, that none of the parties involved-
Affiliated with the developer.
Okay. So what we're saying is those developers are not a part of any type of political action committee?
The developer is saying that to us, yes.
And I guess, Brian, can we touch base a little bit on this, uh, on this CRA and TIF? Um, we are, we are looking at a fifty percent over fifteen years of the improvement of the entire site. Do we know what the monetary value of that is? 'Cause I don't think it was quite spelled out in the development agreement.
The monetary value of the CRA?
Yes.
The CRA will generate to the city in the first fifteen years, it will generate two point three six million to those parties, exclusive of the city, it will generate five point six five million.
Thank you. Um, we had, uh, we had talked earlier, and I think it was a, a resident who brought this up, of thoughtful growth, uh, and I'm gonna also add in there forced growth. It was, uh, it was comments that I recall in the Brant Pike revitalization plan, um, that, um, forced growth is what will destroy, um, commercial businesses a- and retail. Um, thoughtful growth, and I, and I believe it was, I don't think it was generational, I don't remember the, the, the the exact term right off the top of my head. Um, and that was in the agreements, um, that was set forth with the Chamber of Commerce, the local businesses, the city residents, and this, uh, city council, those who participated and supported the Brant Pike revitalization plan. I was, I, I'd just come to find out, uh, this morning that even our own Chamber of Commerce, um, who we just became members with again after, um, an unfortunate situation, was, was not made aware of this, and they were a key component in that, um, they have scheduled a meeting on Wednesday to discuss this, and I, I, I for one would really like to know, hear their feedback, since we're a main, member of them. Um, I know a lot of area businesses around there, including Eric Nolton at the Huber Center, uh, and the owner of LaFino's. Um, I, I think, I, I think they, um, they should have a little insight to this as well. Um, I think they did chime in on that, uh, initial study, um, to see, you know, if this is something that, uh, that is beneficial to those area business. Um, I know, uh, myself and Mr. Otto just went to Wiley's this weekend, and, uh, one of my questions was, uh, you know, I, you know, I wonder, you know, with all the, the, uh, growth of business along Brant Pike, the, the new facade, uh, the updates of businesses, if we have such a a low income of residents and a low turnout of residents, man, it sure seems like a lot of commercial businesses around there are taking care of their properties and, and, and really keeping them up and, uh, and, and improving them. Um, I, I mean, I believe, uh, we just had a, at the old, um, uh, Sees Pizza Double Deuce, uh, new gas station, uh, uh, opened up there. I don't think the city was involved in that at all. Again, that, uh, that, I'll go back to, uh, that was thoughtful growth because it wasn't a situation that was forced upon. It just happened. Um, we said earlier, why hasn't this happened? Well, I'm gonna go back to my original comments in twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen because this city will not hire an economic development director, not a coordinator, not a title. And I, and I feel bad for that individual, 'cause he's not here anymore. I thought he did great work. But we never have had an economic development director charged with doing this job. You know, for the Lehman Farm, we, we went out and we said, hey, S.B. Friedman, give us some information. This council listened to about, I'm gonna say thirty to forty percent of that information. In my opinion, if the developer really read through the Brant Pike revitalization plan, I have to agree in, in several parts with Mr. Otto, they, they missed the walkability. They missed the connectability. Additionally, this council at the helm of, not the past city manager, but the city manager before them, 'cause I know we've been through a, a few here lately, um, we passed an overlay plan for mixed-use development for commercial on the bottom, residential on top, and a lot of other wonderful inventive things for this community. And it is not in this plan at all. So this council wasted a boatload of time, uh, you know, passing legislation for this particular area that we're not even using. We can, we, we created a whole zoning, uh, overlay that we're not even using. That has shown, a- and Brian, I'll go back to, to, to your, your, um, research. If you look in the markets of Cincinnati, um, Columbus, even in the suburbs of those, mixed-use development is the way that the small niche mom-pop stores and even the regional franchises are moving into. Yes, you know, i- if you Yes, you know, i- if you look at, you know, Esri and you look at a lot of the other economic development forums, you're not going to get your local regional stores in there at all. However, if we have that solid partnership with the Dayton Development Coalition and MVRPC and we have a solid plan that is what the residents want, I honestly believe, and it is my opinion, that if we provide the residents what they want and we tell the residents, we're not going to be able to recoup every dollar of that. But what we're going to do is we're going to give you the exact thing that you're looking for, the walkability, the downtown that people in this community have been screaming about for years. I bet you dollars to donuts, the residents are going to say, you gave me what I want. I'm fine with that, you got rid of that 48-year-old eyesore, but you gave me what I wanted. But I'm going to tell you right now, the people that myself and Miss, and, and Miss Kitchen and Mr. Otto spoke with that are directly impacted behind the streets there are very adamant, no apartments.
I have a question. Jerry, when, when we purchased that acreage from Premier, there was a, there was a purchase and sale agreement that was done, correct? In that purchase and sale agreement, would there have been any, um, deed restrictions that would have been part of that? Part of that agreement that this council passed, um, by legislation?
The sale from Premier?
Yeah, when we purchased.
Yes, there was expressed deed conditions.
Brian, what are the, what are the deed restrictions for that parcel where all those, where we purchased from Premier?
The, uh, the deed restrictions include, um, residential uses. They include lighter limited to commercial retail uses, non-competitive medical uses with the, uh, Premier, um, the Premier Group. And, um, we'll, we'll call them, uh, derelict or pervasive uses, such as tattoo parlors, marijuana sale dispensaries, those kinds of things.
So we can't put anything in there, or if somebody wanted to put something in that was a indirect competition with Premier Health, that wouldn't be allowed?
Correct.
Residential units, multi-family is, is an approved use of the deed restrictions that this council passed, correct?
Correct.
And and light commercial, is that what you said, light commercial?
Yes, sir.
And the, and the study point blank says that we need to reduce the amount of commercial space to increase the actual commercial property value along the Brant Pike corridor. So there's, there aren't a whole, whole lot of options and I appreciate your passion, Richard. I'm passionate as you are just on the other side. I happen to, you may tend to think that there might be some people that said, I'm okay with you guys losing some of my money as long as you get what I want, but I'm also concerned about the people who don't want us to lose their money, who want to see investment, who want to see a return on that investment. So this council continued to do the, the exact type of revitalization that the Brant Pike corridor lays out.
Mayor, I would agree with you, but you said the corridor, not the Marion Meadows property.
And the Marion Meadows property is a specific piece of the Brant Pike corridor. And that is where, that is where this council agreed to start. When we purchased Marion Meadows, when we purchased the Premier Health property, when we purchased the CR Dayton property. And if I'm not mistaken, every one of those passed eight to zero with full support of this council. And when we bought the Premier Health property, in there was the deed restrictions that called out residential and multi-family as part of that, non-competing, non-competition with them. So that was in there, that was all readily available and this council still passed it to purchase that property eight to zero.
I would revert back, you back to the overlay district conversation that the previous city manager had that said the, uh, mixed-use development was an approved, uh, item that was researched prior by the legal council that stated that that would be utilized. I, I would ask you to go back and read those minutes and watch the video.
I just know what the deed restrictions are.
Then I would say that.
And I'm not interested in losing taxpayer money on this project.
I, I, then I would question if the ordinance provided by the previous city manager and the review of the law director at that time was accurate. Because that's what we told the residents it was going to be. We, we create, we, the planning commission was involved in that. We went through a lot of steps and a lot of communication on that. So I would hate to s- to, to tell everybody in that area and the entire, you know, um, community that, hey, we passed this. We said the information was valid at this time, but because it doesn't meet our narrative, not today.
I don't think it's the narrative, I think it's, it's the deed restriction. We know what's there, we know what the study says. The study says reduce retail space and residential and non-competition of a premier product.
Mayor, I appreciate you giving me the floor to speak. Um, I, I don't think it's going to be any surprise to yourself, uh, many sitting on this dais and some sitting in the audience that I will not support this tonight. Um, if it is passed to a second reading, um, I would be willing to, uh, have additional conversation, uh, with the city manager. Um, I'd be interested in seeing, uh, you know, the business community's input from this. Um, I had about a 55-minute conversation with the executive director who told me he's in contact with the board president and they have scheduled a meeting on Wednesday to discuss this very topic. Um, and additionally, I, I think, uh, um, the, the residents who signed a, a multitude of petition, letters of opposition, I had, I told Tony before this meeting, I have roughly, uh, six-plus emails, uh, of opposition uh, that I'm going to be sending to him, uh, for, for public record as well. You know, I.
Richard, I have a question. So you, on social media, I did see where, uh, there was a a long list of items where you copied and pasted, asking people to come out and, and show their opposition to this. Did you also copy and paste that and ask people to come out who actually were in support of this as well? Or were you just trying to fill your narrative through social media?
At no point in time did I, um, state my opinion, I provided facts, that was out there.
But all the ones that I seen you ask to come and, and show your, to come tonight and speak were all people who referenced this in a negative light. There wasn't any that I, hold on, there wasn't any that I saw where you posted asking somebody who was in, in favor or who showed support. There were two people here tonight that showed support, we have some emails from people who, who have showed support.
Matter of fact, one of the emails I'm going to be sending to Tony is in support.
So, so all I'm saying is that if you're talking about a narrative, let's just be honest about the narratives that we're talking about.
Which is why I want to be providing Tony an email of support.
We had an executive session last week to actually talk about this and to discuss this and go over a lot of these details.
And I walked out of that.
And Ms. Otto chose not to participate.
I walked out of that because three slides in, after having a previous 40-minute conversation on item F and G at that time, was a complete waste of our time.
Well, at that, at that point, we were in executive session, we voted to go and then you chose not to participate in the discussion.
So, so Mayor, let me ask you that, and, uh, this is actually a question for Jerry. As we went into executive, um, session, um, it was noted that we had to go into executive session because a person's interest, private interest, um, would overweight or benefit the public's interest. Can I ask where that was, you know, where that's at tonight and was the executive session under that topic valid?
Yes, we had, when we went into executive session, as we mentioned, we had two choices. We could go into, um, public sale of this property and go to the best bidder or we could entertain, uh, an offer or a development proposal that we received. We had a very, well, without going into depth of executive session, that was discussed briefly. Um, and then executive session began and then ended pretty quickly thereafter.
I, I, I was just wondering because I didn't see that as an option that was provided to the residents here tonight that either we approve this development or we can go out and have additional conversations with developers giving the residents what they want or go to public sale for that, but you're saying that is an option?
It's always an option.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, I, again, I appreciate you giving the time, I understand your passion, I know you understand my passion. I, um, you know, that, at this matter, we're going to have to agree to disagree and.
I certainly can do that. Glenn?
I just want to make a quick comment to the, the money discussion, the return on investment. Although I understand that this project was, it wasn't sold as an investment. It was sold as we were creating a place, a space, a, a, a new part of our community that our community didn't have. We can speak to return on investment all day long, but, um, we'll not get a dollar back from our Veterans Memorial. It's a good investment still. We won't get a dollar back from these bicycle amenities, but they're still good investments. We're not going to get money back on any of this park space or any of these, uh, 100,000, multi-hundred thousand dollar playground pieces of equipment that we put in. But it's still a good investment. It's not always about dollars, it's about taking care of our community and the people that are in it. And these people came out for a solid year, walked up and down Brant Pike, put stickers on pictures, gave their comments, ma- they knew what they wanted and we heard it, we knew what they wanted. They said what they wanted, I don't know if you were here when that happened, but it was a, it was a big thing and people spoke their, and that's what they wanted. Nobody ever said, as long as we get our money back. That never happened. That wasn't the concern. Sometimes it's not purely about that return on investment, but it's about providing an amenity to your community. Otherwise, we wouldn't have a, an aquatic center because it loses tens of thousands of dollars every single year. And I can name a bunch of things that we wouldn't have. Emergency services, that doesn't make us money, it costs money, but we need it because it takes care of our community. That was the whole point of this project, not to ex- just simply expand our community by creating, creating more, um, housing. So I just want that note that, that invest, return on investment is not always, shouldn't always anyway, be measured in dollars and cents. Sometimes it's, it's measured in the quality of life for people and their well-being. And especially those in that area of town who haven't seen that quality of life that some of the residents who came out to spoke, to speak tonight have seen in their brand-new development. So that's where I'm at, that's why I can't support it right now because we're giving nothing back to the people. Again, on a Friday night, I can't say, hey, Andy, let's go down to this, uh, let's go down to the meadows and take a walk. Why? Why would we do that? What's the point? The closed library, closed tax office? Maybe I want to go visit some people I don't know that live in apartments or, uh, there's, there's no reason for me to do that. And that was the whole point of this project, the reason it lasted so long, took so long and took so much input. Because it wasn't about dollars and cents, it was about creating community and something that we can be proud of in our community. And Mr. Campbell nailed it when he said, look, we're biting off a ton right here, guys. I think he implied, I don't remember if he said it specifically, but implied, we could lose a lot of money on this. Can you guys stomach that? Can you bring this to the people? And I said, absolutely, I can't because I think that's what they want, that's what they said they want. It wasn't about money, it was about creating a space and an opportunity for our residents to congregate, socialize and enjoy themselves. So that's where I'm at and. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? We have a motion on second, Mr. Rogers.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mrs. Kitchen?
No.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Burge?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
No.
And motion carries five to three. Next up is I've number 13, city official reports and comments. Anyone have anything?
Oh, the only thing I, Mayor, what topic are we on, the citizens' or comments?
City official reports and comments.
I gotta say, I'm wearing my Bengals tie today, I'm going to, uh, uh, be hoping for a win on Sunday. I'd like to, uh, see, uh, Bengals, uh, go to the Super Bowl.
I could not agree more, I just hope that it's not against the San Francisco 49ers.
As a, as a Pittsburgh fan, I'm going to back that, I'll be rooting for the Steelers just because I want to see it come home to the AFC North. Let's bring it, guys, represent.
Anything else? Yes, Mr. Webb?